All right, we will start the joint work session, work session with the tourism committee at six oh one P M. So I think everybody knows the background, but I'll do a quick overview here. The current contract for support services for tourism ends November thirty. We're looking to figure out how to move forward with that support service. At the last council meeting, council approved this work session with tourism to work together to find a solution forward. They also approved requesting a six-month extension with the museum to coverage until we figure out how to move forward and for the tourism committee to put an RFP together. Myself and the contracted support have put together a quick presentation for tonight to give both council and the committee what we have seen over our last two and a half years with this organization, what we feel what we're recommending is the best path forward. And then you all can take that information and move forward as you see fit.
Before we get started, I'm curious, did, I want to ask you tourism committee, did they approve this document that we're reviewing tonight?
It was presented to us in draft form, but that's as a F Y I, just we presented it as.
Okay, so it was approved, of course, I mean.
It's a recommendation coming from the museum and from me, it's not come, it's, it doesn't seem to be.
Okay, so it's a recommendation coming from you, or so this is, is this a tourism recommendation? I'm just wondering.
This is a recommendation from the current support staff on what they've seen in operations and what they feel is the best way to move forward. It is completely separate from actual tourism committee.
Okay, so, but my problem is that this is a joint tourism meeting, not a joint staff meeting.
Lot of joy, I see where you're going with this.
Because I want, I want here for tourism, I really don't.
Want to hear a presentation from staff, yeah, I can.
So, you know, I'm, I'm a little perplexed. We have a system, I don't, I, I don't understand why, I mean, I understand you want to make recommendations to move the tourism forward, but to me, I feel like this is a discussion that we need to have a tourism staff, so I don't, I don't, I don't understand this direction.
We are trying to give everybody all of the information possible, everything we have seen to give you all the information you need to make a decision. This is the way we felt best to do it, on how we, as a recommendation, on how to move forward, and then take it from there.
Okay, so if I can just push back a little bit, to me, it feels like this should be presented to the tourism committee first, and then the tourism committee can make recommendations to us, not the, I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse doing it this way. I don't, I don't know how the tourism feels about it, I, but that's the way I feel, I feel like I should hear from tourism first before I.
Hear from staff.
Again, this, well, the thought was this is a joint work session, we have everybody here, we can present everybody the same information and discuss it from there.
So then my question would be, does, does tourism feel like this represents what you guys have decided and what you guys have been talking about and the direction that you guys want to go?
I don't think we might made a decision as a committee, I think, you know, Janice presented the information, and so I think we were under the impression that the point of this meeting was to like have an open discussion about it. Not that we would make the decision necessarily and then present it to council, so that kind of color was portrayed to us.
Well, I was under, I guess, we saw this, and it was understandable, it, it helped the new tourism committee, which we all are fairly new, I mean, this is just the beginnings for a lot of us, that this meeting workshop would be what to hear and discuss with council, what they wanted to see from tourism, from us, because we personally, I understand where, where Jordan and the museum are going with this document, I understand that because of the contract. But I don't think a lot of us on tourism are, are confident that we could help make these decisions, because we don't really know where we stand as a committee and what we're supposed to be overseeing and doing, am I saying that right? Because we, we don't really have, I don't see personally, a structure for our committee as of yet, and I thought that that's what we were going to be here this evening, was to hear what the council wanted kind of from us and discuss that, what you were looking for in recommendations of what you wanted to see the tourism committee be able to come together and bring to you, not so much contract talks.
Courtney. So then, Jordan, since you've been in between both of the groups communicating for us, what, what was, what was the overall general idea that, that what was your takeaway from the last meeting that you thought council wanted and you thought tourism wanted during this meeting?
That council wanted with, with the vote for a six-month extension and then tourism would put an RFP together. Tourism, I don't think really quite, because it is a lot of new folks, not quite sure best way to move forward. And again, this was part of trying to get everybody as much information as they can to make that decision.
Yeah, and I was personally under the impression that we are coming here to discuss the presentation that Janice put together and the path forward on that, not general tourism duties.
Okay, then I, I, that was not misunderstanding, yeah, we all took, well, obviously walked away with a different impression, yeah. This is important, I'm not, you know, not bypassing that, but I think at the last tourism meeting, we discussed how under, uneducated or under-informed, a lot of the new members were on what was wanted to be seen from us by council, because we are, I, I guess feeling that we're supposed to be working with council as a support system in the tourism industry, and with that a lot of us new ones, there's like no guideline saying, okay, we're supposed to be doing this, you know, and that, yes. I know that Janice has done a lot of the consulting work and keeping things together as the committee has grown, which is amazing, the things that I've seen and that she's done, but but you might be right about putting the horse before the cart. A lot of the council itself doesn't really know which direction we're supposed to be heading. And we do understand that we need to have, have our own support system, am I saying that correctly? But, and how we get there, do we just go along with what we've been doing, or how do we find out the new stuff?
Yes, so I built a lot of that historic, recent history context into the presentation, which I think will help give you some context for a lot of this discussion, if you're interested in hearing it, but.
And, and I, and I just want to say that the reason why I, I don't want to repeat what happened with the last council going against the recommendation of the tourism and completely exploding, blowing up the whole tourism community, which is why I feel there was like a lot of, like, we've had a lot of problems with turnovers since the last, not listening to what the recommendation of the tourism was, so I'm I want to hear what the tourism has to say, not necessarily what the paid staff has to say, but. Mary Ann, Sally, were you on tourism many?
Yes.
Okay, and, and when that tourism group was, was going, it was working fine?
Yes, as far as I can see, I got involved with medical issues and stuff and had to step away, but the short time that I was with that group, they, they functioned very well, that I could see. People knew what they needed to do, what they were supposed to be taking to council, were going out in the community, I mean, things have changed, it's been a few years, obviously, but the, the ball, the committee members were doing a lot of the legwork, and of course, we did have a paid support person.
Right, a paid support person, not, but a paid support person that knew about tourism and knew what needed to be done, is that correct?
Not.
Annie knew a lot of.
Yeah, she knew about, a lot about chambers and, and that sort of thing, then that is kind of the direction at that time that I saw and felt that we were involved in, it was a lot of the local chambers and the reach outreach to those places, and that was being done by the members of the committee.
Courtney.
So, so simply, or to, to kind of recap my understanding of, of what we all feel like this meeting is, is that council is under the impression that we were going to receive recommendations from tourism on, on a direction they wanted to go, tourism was under the impression that they were going to receive a direction, and paid staff is the one that came up with the direction. Is that kind of what, what we're all?
We were receiving direction, that we were receiving a recommendation, but, but that the goal was this to be for what to do after the convention expires, but like, at least, again, I guess, I assume for myself, since it sounds like we heard a little bit different things. I thought that this was the workshop to have like an open discussion, Janice presents their recommendation, and then we go from there, so that was like what I thought was happening.
If we decide if we want to go over the presentation, but in doing so, it could be that does tourism agree with what's being recommended? I mean, because there's no sense in going over something if you guys are not for it.
Yeah, I mean, we've been approached with several different simulations that have been recommended to us, and you know, just been kind of following a lead because.
I think we've just been kind of listening, but we're really, and, and
hopefully kind of understanding the recommendations, but I don't think as a group, are, have we talked about a direction that we're comfortable with, we're just kind of.
I think having individual opinions, but we're not together as a group.
As a group and discussed it within, amongst ourselves, is that, yeah.
So can we agree to at least go through this, so it gives us some information that maybe we're looking for, or what do we want? Just to give me some directions, so we're not wasting any time. We'll see, it's up to the tourism committee, yeah, that's you guys, or you guys want to just?
I think that would be a good use of time.
Sarah.
I don't know, it, to me, it just seems like it's the same thing of you know, that we're, we haven't been allocated any responsibilities, and which I, when Sally and them were on committee, it seemed like they knew so much more and were involved in it a lot more, and it seems like for two years I've been there, it's been very little, but but the committee has shrunk, and then it gets big, and then it shrinks, and it's, it's like back to square one, but it seems like we just keep going back to square one and we're not getting anywhere, and it's very frustrating, and I can see how the committees that would want to explode, because it's just a revolving door.
So, when you guys become, whenever you signed up and you got approved and all that, did you get a packet that had the council procedures and all that?
No, I got that a year later.
Yeah, years later?
Yeah, guys, a year later.
Okay, okay, that's, that's your turn, yeah, sorry about that, guys.
So I, I don't know, I just don't think pers, I mean, I don't mind if Janice goes over this, because we talked, we did talk about this in our meeting.
Yeah, I think it's some information.
And it is good information, this, and she, and there are pros and cons in here about what's been going on, but to make a decision at this juncture, I don't think our, our committee members have had a chance to really knock around options, or to, you know, really dive in to see what our options are and how we, if, if you're looking at us to see how we want it structured, we, we were kind of looking for someone else to help us figure out how to structure this, so.
Yeah, it's just been a combination of, yeah. I, I admire the way the old tourism, we're so involved in that, and Janice has totally taken the lead, I agree, that's wonderful, but I would love to, like what Sally says, to distribute merch and go to the different conferences, and we, I, I think we've been to, I've been to two conferences, and we never got merch, we went around and gathered merch, but I thought it'd be cool if it could be more hands-on like that.
Yeah.
So I think what we'll do is, what I'm hearing is that we're good with listening to the information and gathering facts, and then we'll go from there, is that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, Janice, you're on.
All right, good evening, my name is Janice Crane, I'm the executive director of the Friends of the Cascade Box Historical Museum, which, as you know, is your current vendor for tourism services. In preparation for contract renewal, I'm here tonight to talk to you about the challenges we've had with administering tourism, and I hope it'll guide your conversation this evening and to make recommendations on how to improve everyone's experiences. One of the strengths of our proposal during the twenty twenty-three RFP process was our professional network, so this next slide is just a list of tourism industry professionals that have weighed in on where Cascade Box is at as a destination, and how to improve everyone's experience with destination management here. Some of these people have given up to ten hours and three consultations to Cascade Box as far as like supporting this development, and they're really looking at it as a case study for small destination growth. So then next slide, please. So there's two primary issues that are facing Cascade Box tourism, this is just what, if we zoom all the way out and we look at the organizational challenges, the two primary things that I see are understanding gaps about the committee's role, structure, and function, and expectation gaps in the service level for tourism support. And I think that these two challenges begat that third challenge of politics, this is taking up a lot of time and oxygen, and ongoing misunderstandings are just really confusing for people, so let's review these issues and figure out what we could do differently to make reality meet the expectations. So on that next slide, problem number one is the committee's role, structure, and function, so the first conclusion that we've come to is that there are some significant understanding gaps, because how we've always done things and what's in the tourism committee ordinance and how things work when you're conducting business are different. When the council went against the committee's recommendation in twenty twenty-three and aborted the museum, the contract, several of your most experienced tourism committee members resigned. Debbie Fein stayed on long enough to give me a list of her complaints that she had prior to her resignation, and those were primarily around budget transparency and committee structure. The twenty twenty-three committee members were in the process of advising council to update ordinance two five nine, which is the coordinate about the tourism committee, and progress stopped on that when those committee members quit. At the last point committee and city council meeting in January twenty twenty-four, city council asked the committee to evaluate its role, structure, and function. Now, most of the city councillors and committee members have turned over since then, Sarah is the only person still on the tourism committee, and and Pete are the only two still on city council, so it's a lot of new people and a lot of new direction, right? And so I facilitated that meeting, and in the interest of continuing that work, I've been thinking about this for you. So the committee-led format isn't supporting functional destination management as it is right now. On the next slide. So these are the three basic types of functional board structures that you see in government and nonprofit leadership groups typically fall into. These are working boards, where the committee members do the work themselves between meetings. Governance and advisory boards, which are, they guide policy and then delegate the work to staff, and volunteer groups, which don't have formal decision-making authority, but they do a lot of work on especially events and fun projects. And if you go through and ask committee members, past and present, what kind of board the tourism committee is, you will find people who answer that it's any of these three different types, and it's because it has functioned in these different ways over the years. When this committee has been at its most effective, it has been functioned as a working board. However, ordinance two five nine most closely aligns with the governance or advisory board, which is pretty typical of a government committee. The most unsatisfied committee members who resigned midway through their terms thought that they were joining a volunteer group. On the next slide, there are some challenges with each of these different structures. In my personal experience of serving on working boards, they become dysfunctional quickly when members don't come into the group already knowing the basics of what they need to do. And when you have a group of qualified professionals on the board, and they still have a turnover to the point of being unsustainable, because you're asking people to do what they normally do for money as a volunteer. Governance and advisory boards require adequate, adequate staffing to complete the work, and a staff member that has to effectively manage and engage the board. You do not currently have sufficient staffing levels to support that structure on this committee. Volunteer groups also need strong leadership. On the slide about the ordinance, so the ordinance creates, that creates the committee is at its core, creating a governance advisory committee. It's kind of open to interpretation, because most of what's included is procedure, not function. It has to have all the appointments and term definitions, position numbers, meeting rules, but very vague instructions on what work the committee actually does. The ordinance that governs the committee is separate from the administrative rules governing transient lodging tax, which were last updated in twenty twenty-one, and short-term rentals, which was last updated in twenty twenty-four. This ordinance has not been updated since nineteen eighty-eight. So tourism was a completely different industry, in nineteen eighty-eight, a general advisory committee worked, because it wasn't a heavy lift for the city clerk to send out a couple of checks per quarter for magazine ads. With the evolution of tourism and marketing as an industry to include digital marketing, A I applications, data analysis, and strategic collaborations, it becomes a higher skill staffing requirement. This is beyond the scope of what your current city staffing levels can support. On the next slide. I think you would really benefit from a better definition around the board structure for this committee, and I think it would improve committee members' experiences to have everyone have their expectations of their goals. The committee should spend time evaluating which type of board it would function best on. Earlier this month, I also recommended that if our contract was going to be extended, that the museum would only accept that extension contingent on engaging with a strategic planning consultant to facilitate that discussion. I think hiring a facilitator will guarantee that a multiple conversation takes place on a reasonable timeline, and that the right questions will be considered to be successful. Then after that, you would update the ordinance so that the documentation supports the continued success of the planned structure. Now, the second problem that you're seeing is expectation gaps in service levels for tourism support. The other main problem is that the expectations versus the reality of what you're looking for when you go out to RFP for a contractor. A huge part of the conflict has been ongoing since we contracted this role, is that some people don't understand the difference between an employee and a contractor. The contract itself has very clearly follows the legal definition for those, the city has contracts with other companies for services like waste management, the water treatment plant, alignment, but you treat the tourism service contract differently. People are having a really hard time wrapping their ideas, their head around the idea that the museum is a company that can provide a service. The community-level understanding is that tourism support is a person doing a job. Using the titles, tourism support staff is part of what sets this expectation. This is a job title, it says staff in the title, but you don't have an employee. On the next one. So the I R S and the Bureau of Labor and Industries have really clear definitions of what constitutes an employee versus what is a contract position. Contracts are between two businesses with one providing services for the other. Individuals who engage in ten ninety-nines are self-employed and they pay their own taxes. If someone performs a service that you can control what, when, and how it will be done, you have an employee. So contractor versus employee is defined by that level of control, who decides which work gets done and how, and are there required approvals in place? So my recommendation for problem number two is that I've spent the last two years undergoing a very public performance review for a job that doesn't exist, and I think to support that set of expectations, it doesn't match the agreement or the ordinance. So functionally, you want this to be an employee, you all refer to it as tourism support staff in every report as if it's an employee, and you want the level of control that comes with having an employee. And if that's the case, that's fine, but you need to hire an employee, so to make it, you know, align with the reality of the situation, you don't go out for RFP to develop a job description. There's some risks to going out to RFP again and contracting with an individual, if you continue to contract with people and treat them like employees, you could be liable for employment taxes for as long as people get treated that way. And then for a more positive framing on the next slide. Hiring is also my strong recommendation for how you can grow this part of your budget, and so to support this, it did some digging into how other cities manage tourism. So in April, I prompted the committee to start talking about strategic planning, going into budget discussions. And I researched and compiled a list of similarly sized cities with similar volumes of tourism, so I was looking at census data, maps, local economies, proximity to high-volume destinations, lodging property mixes, and then I filtered for incorporated entities that can leverage their own B L T. So on the next slide, please. So I identified thirteen other cities that made a good comparison for Cascade Bonds. The northern parts of the coast, cities along the way to the coast, and the wine country all see high volumes of nature first. John Day and Enterprise were included, because they're both adjacent to high-volume outdoor recreation destinations, although the fossil beds and the Wolauas are not as high-impact as the board. And what we found on the next slide is that if you look at the chart, you'll see that most of these destinations are contracting with their local chamber of commerce to provide destination management and marketing service. So this is the trend in the eighties and nineties, when T L T became a supplementary option for chamber dues. The other two cities with just advisory committees like what we have are Amity and Bay City. Amity's tourism committee consists of two city councillors, three industry professionals, and one citizen member. The Amity, Amity has fewer overnight lodging options than we, than we do, they only have one hotel, and their committee has been working since at least April on getting their destination a website. Bay City's transient lodging tax advisory committee hasn't met since July, but they primarily oversee a grant program dispersing T L T to local organizations and companies for marketing. Because of the work done by our tourism committee when it was a functional working board, we are developed beyond this as a destination. And so the next step for growth is to join that little dark blue wedge there, is to increase your staff support. And then I have good information from our neighboring D M Os about how we can grow, so on the next slide. Our two closest D M O destination management organization neighbors are Visit Hood River, which is an independent organization that contracts with the city to spend T L T. The Hood River Chamber contract includes a lump sum made up of twenty-five percent of T L T receipts, which they can use to promote tourism under their control. Our second closest neighbor is Explore Troutdale, which is managed by Marley Boxler, who is a city employee. And in the interest of supporting the recommendation to hire, I want to show you their proof of concept. So justifications for leaving this, I, I mentioned that hiring an employee would help with making expectation and reality line up, but in addition, the city has infrastructure project management needs that could fall under tourism and destination management. And that work is still going to need to be completed, even if tourism services are contracted to a third party, whether that is the museum or a hypothetical Visit Cascade Box D M O organization, any third-party entity, you would still have that work you have to do. On the next slide, so at the Troutdale City Council meeting on October fifteenth, Marley reported that the return on investment for hiring an employee. So just for an overview of their T L T structure, they first implemented it at five percent in nineteen seventy-two, and on the next slide here, there's a timeline that shows how it's grown. In nineteen ninety-nine, they added a special zero point nine five percent designated for the Chamber of Commerce, and then in twenty twenty, they reallocated it to Funded Tourism and Economic Development Division within the city. And they hired Marley Boxler, and her title is Economic Development Coordinator. And so on the next slide here, so Marley was able to demonstrate that they've seen a fifty-nine percent increase in hotel revenue and a two hundred thirty-eight percent growth in their short-term rental market since transitioning to an in-house position. When we compare it to Cascade Box, Troutdale has five hotels, and one of them is Edgefield, but their comfort in and their motel sticks are comparable with some of the motel properties in Cascade Box. They also have over eleven times our population, so their housing inventory is much larger and can support having forty-six short-term rental properties. I think this is an investment worth making, seventy percent of your T L T goes into your general fund, so investing in tourism development helps your general fund bottom line. In addition to the projects you already have planned, like downtown development and wayfinding, a full-time employee could be managing marketing campaign life cycles, developing visitor resources, recruiting downtown tenants, new attractions, and hotel developers to Cascade Box, in addition to training your committee on how to be a committee, right? This is also a huge opportunity for better partnership with the port, so both the port and the city have different responsibilities for supporting economic development in our community, and finding that synergy could be a goal for this position. In addition, I think you'd save a lot of time and energy by having someone be in charge who is paid to devote their full-time attention to tourism and Cascade Box. So that's what I'm recommending, and thank you for your time and attention this evening, and I hope that this facilitates some robust discussion. Um, so that's what I'm recommending and thank you for your time and attention this evening and I hope that this facilitates some robust discussion.
So is this a, a full-time position, forty hours?
Yes.
A week? And, uh, you know what the median pay gives? For this position?
Um, I have not personally completed a salary study for it, um, based on job postings that I've seen anywhere between seventy and ninety would be a range.
Seventy ninety, oh, here. Seventy and ninety year.
Yes.
Um, and then also is, uh, this going to be, uh, separate from the museum because it, um,
Yeah, instead of like, yeah.
Because throughout the reports, I, I see a lot of museums up in here, which is not tourism, that's port. So, uh, yeah, I just.
Right, so I'm recommending that instead of going out for RFP, that you develop a job description.
But, okay.
Yeah.
Taking, taking.
So, yeah, yeah, there's no, if there's no RFP, there's nothing for us to reply for and say, hey, we're putting in an application for.
So is museum on our, 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 our F P? I mean, uh, okay, okay, so it's just curious why, because it just, there seems to be some irony between tourism, I mean, between, yeah, tourism, city and uh, museum, port.
She's recommend, she's recommending that an employee of the city.
Of the city.
Would have to take it totally away from the museum, it would be just like any other city staff.
Yep.
Courtney.
And so, yeah, I, I've had a hard time playing catch-up and, and trying to understand where the line's drawn between tourism and the museum. Because it seems like there, there are a lot of, maybe, I, I want to say interchangeable, but maybe just a lot of, uh, poor verbiage being used, you know, and when we, like, as far as, you know, like, as you brought up, referring to city staff as, or support staff as, as an employee and, and how that's not working. So maybe, you know, and so you said beginning of your presentation, um, that the museum is the vendor of tourism. And so maybe understanding that a little better, we'll have to understand.
Yeah, yeah, so you have a contract with the museum to provide a service, just like you have a contract with whoever you do for the waste bar treatment plan, right? Um, or for, you know, the garbage.
Legal service.
Legal service, and all of those are different things that you contract out. And your contract with the museum is very similar to those contracts, but the expectation for service, it doesn't match with what's in the contract.
So, so how does that make the museum the vendor?
Yeah, because we have a contract with you to provide a service.
The museum is the vendor of tourism.
Yes.
So the contract with the museum is that the museum will be tourism?
Do tourism stuff for that.
Currently. Works, works with the tourism committee to promote tourism for Cascade Locks.
Uh, Pete, and then I'll get to.
So just, uh, I think I understand this, so that the museum is a nonprofit.
Yeah.
Nonprofits can make money. I mean, they can raise revenue, but their end goal is not to be a for-profit business, right? I mean, that's correct, am I, am I, so the museum is a five oh one C nonprofit. Contracted with the city to provide our DMO service, is that right? Did I say that correct?
Kind of, um, the contract that we have is, um, based on the RFP that was put out to hire the support staff. So we're providing an administrative service for the tourism committee. So we are contracted to do the things that are on this document, um, which are all pretty vague, um.
And I, that, you alluded to that the expectation from, um, doesn't match with what's in the contract. Can you speak a little bit more to that?
Yeah, I, I think the imagined idea of this being a job, it's a person who's going to be available to do, go to the meeting to take the notes, which is fine, but, um, if you want it to be a person that's doing a job, then you need to hire an employee. Whereas if you want to contract out services, do it a little bit more wholesale, like, we've had a lot of leniency to be able to do what we see fit with, within the bounds of the contract. And that hasn't necessarily matched with, um, like, when the committee couldn't meet, we still had services to provide, right? So we had to make a lot of decisions, which is under the bounds of our contract, fine, right? But it's confusing for people.
All right, you guys, uh, Tiffany? Okay, so I'm, I'm still confused. Uh, the port owns the collection and the port owns the property, so I don't understand why, what that has to do with tourism, I don't.
We have a contract with the museum, with friends of the museum, for twenty five thousand, uh, to provide tourism support. Um, so that means they.
We pay them twenty five thousand?
Yes.
For tourism support?
Yes.
Means what?
So we should, we get demonstration in the meetings, we write the minutes, we organize the committee when they're deciding to change the date of a meeting, like, we're managing the email inbox, we're doing all of the different administrative tasks that are beyond what we're doing, billing, we help with the budget, we, yeah, it's, it's all admin office type, so you're right, ready to go.
Are you done? Uh, Bernard?
Yes, thanks for the presentation. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'll just give you my kind of bottom line upfront, where, where my head is on this, and then I, I want to ask a few questions. So if I were to rank our options, uh, my first option would be to explore using the chamber as our tourism service provider and diverting the thirty percent funds to those guys. And then we take on a, a regional approach to tourism. And, uh, you know, uh, use that scale, I mean, they're, they, they, they do a lot of promotion for the gorge. And I feel like there's no reason we can't be a partner in that. And we, we piggyback on the, the, uh, the broader, uh, you know, resources they have to amplify our limited, uh, TRT, uh, funds. So that, that's option one. Option two is we stick with the vendor services. Um, I'm not displeased, I understand the challenges that Ms. Crane has laid out, but when I look at their performance of tourism in Cascade Locks, I feel like we're being very successful. Um, I asked the city administrator to give me the, the last five years of TRT revenue and how that's changed. I, I only got a quarter, Jordan, are you aware of that, what you sent me?
Could have been all of it, but I'll double check.
Yeah, I, I pulled up the attachment and it just shows basically one quarter of revenue. Uh, so I'm not sure what happened there, but something to, go ahead.
No, I just, I thought I attached everything, I'll double check after the meeting.
All right. Anyhow, uh, my suspicion is that if you looked at five years of revenue, you would see a steady increase in transient room tax, uh, uh, receipts over that time. And that means, I mean, some things are just natural, you know, the gorge is growing in popularity. Uh, Oregon is a, a popular tourism destination. These things are just, they have their own energy, but it's also what the work the tourism committee has done to promote us. So you, you match those things, two things together and we, you have a very successful, uh, TRT collection program and our, I would argue, is a very booming tourism industry for our town. Could it be better? Absolutely. I would love to see the numbers, you know, in the off-season, how, uh, uh, revenue declines from, you know, call it October to, uh, April. Uh, so I'm sure there's room for improvement there, but all things considered, I think we've done very well with, uh, the structure we have in place. And then my third choice would be to, uh, to, to make a, a full-time position out of this work. I don't think you, that's completely, uh, you know, uh, an, an, an invalid idea. My idea, though, if we did that, they would be tourism, but also economic development. It wouldn't be just tourism. Um, because I feel like there's more economic development the town should be pursuing beyond tourism. And I would love to see someone working on that, uh, in addition to our tourism requirements, because I feel like we other, have other ambitions beyond that, so. Anyway, it's at the bottom of my list, uh, I'm not sure how the rest of the council feels, but that's how I feel. And, um, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Courtney, and then I'll get, I'll get to you.
Um, just had questions. So this says that this, uh, contract draft says that some of the job functions of this is for on-track support work for the tourism committee. It says that, that that on-track support is part of their job description is minutes taking agendas, committed reports to council responding, well, those, those seem like things to me that, that should be part of the committee's responsibility, and I guess this whole time I was under the impression that we were getting committee reports, not staff reports. Three, um, and, and so I, I, I mean, I think all of this needs to be looked at closer, um. You know, that my, my other, my other question, I guess, is, um, you brought up in presentation, um, but a return of investment from Troutdale, um, investing in a DMO. Um, I'm wondering how that looks against this TLT receipts, because I mean, you said it grew, I can't remember the exact percentage, but you said it grew a certain percentage since, what, seventy nine? From, from a long time ago. Um, but looking at this hour, TLT, it looks like that's grown pretty exponentially, the growth.
That I recorded for Troutdale was through twenty twenty one, twenty twenty four. Um, and those are from, uh, their city council report.
Okay, I got the, the number from first implemented in nineteen seventy two, so I must have. And, and so it looks like without a DMO, we've had similar growth. A little, a little bit less, but we've had, you know, growth um, in that same time period.
Hmm.
And so I'm wondering, um, you know, how much of it is, you know, rebound from twenty twenty one, uh, according to our chart? Um, and, and how much of it is actually the DMO and how to quantify that?
All right, Nathan?
I just was gonna add on the Professor Seeger's comments regarding the TLT receipts and that, uh, I would even be interested to see before twenty twenty, I think the last five years data is going to show a lot of recovery post-COVID. I'd like to see how we compare now, uh, to pre-pandemic times if we're back to normal, or if we've exceeded those, those numbers. That's all I wanted to add.
Okay. Tiffany? I just, I, I, I don't want it to go over, I'm sorry, I just don't, I think we, we have a vested interest in keep it here and not, uh, out, outsource it to a different city, so I'm gonna push back on that, on that, um, from Bernard.
Um. I just want to add a couple of comments that I think when people join tourism, they're like wanting to be out there, like at a booth for ECT days, or you want to plant flowers and keep them watered and go around and help businesses, you know, and, um, deliver brochures, whatever that is. Um, I find a struggle that you guys are sitting in a meeting, trying to approve budgets and stuff whenever we failed. And I had asked the administrator if you guys had gotten the packets of council procedures and stuff, uh, prior to that same night, because you guys were voted into the position. And then I re-asked again and I was told that Janice got them to you, so I'm very disappointed that you guys never received any information. Um, so we need to, as a council, decide who's going to have the packets to give to people when they do get on the, these committees, because we're not giving them any information. And obviously me asking the question isn't good enough. Um, so I think there's a lot that we need to work on with tourism to fine-tune it and get these lines clearly defined, because the water seems to be awful muddy, you know, because people, it's hard to understand, because you just think of the museum, we're not thinking that we're, if it was with um, Pi Pi, then we wouldn't have a problem with the art, with that contract, but because it's the museum, we have a hard time separating it. Um, and I would like to be able to hear, um, because we got like fifteen more minutes, um, of council, don't have any more questions or whatever. Here, like, how do you guys as tourism, what are your, what do you think tourism should be about?
Well, we had discussed before, you know, I mean, we came for city council when I first was on and we had been approached about pushing our tourism through Hood River Chamber, and we voted it down when we did actually have a pool. So we voted that down once and I, I fully disagree with that again, because we have fell under the umbrella of Hood River so many times. And we, we don't exist after that, I don't, I just don't feel that, I think we should be more self-supported as far as tourism. And as far as the committee, uh, um, the other, you know, it's just the stories that you hear from the other tourism committee that they were so more involved and stuff, and when we first started out with tourism, everybody had great ideas, but then everybody crumbled off and I was the only one, I'm like, okay, let's start over again, here we go again. And it's just so frustrating because it's such a dead-ended, like you said, all the confusion of Janice doing grants for the port, for the museum, for us, and then responsibilities for us. And I'm finally figuring it all out, how, a little bit, how it's all meshing together, but it's still a big bundle of confusion to me. But, yeah, um, and we had discussed before, our tourism season takes pretty much care of itself. We were trying to focus more on an off-season or later season stuff for tourism, because the people are going to come to Cascade Locks. I mean, but the position I, I would like for us to be more involved and have more activities to, well, like, our merch. I mean, I would like to see a lot more involvement with tourism as far as that. I would like to go to more of the conferences and stuff, I don't, I see some of them, but like I said, I've been on tourism two years now and I've been to two conferences and I thought, I think that's a big miss for the ones of us that do want to go, I know we all have jobs and I know that's where the good stuff, that stand-offers where to let Janice do everything because we all work. But then still, if we're going to volunteer for this committee, we have to commit something. That's around that, you know, as far as minutes and agendas and, you know, the big problem I have is, you know, Janice does do the agendas, but I would like to have them not the Sunday before the meeting or the Friday that I have to go to the museum to pick it up. I asked her to report, can we print it out, because a lot of times they're very overwhelming. And I would just like to have a little bit more time before the meetings, where we even were just trying to struggle through and read everything and it's a lot. I mean, I think, I would like to be able to print that off as soon as you make the agenda, so that you can access. And I never got a response on why I couldn't print it out. But there's a lot, you know, and I know Janice will go down a little longer flight, but I think that the committee should take a little bit more responsibility. And maybe we can get more stuff, I don't, I don't, I think it's the big frustration, you know, like I can see where the other committee employed serious. About that, I guess.
Heather?
Yeah, um, a few things I would say, I think there's always room for committee members to take on projects or things that they're interested in. Speaking for myself, like I personally took on, if you read the STR regulations and coming to council and making a presentation for what we suggested as a committee, like, I really care about music and bringing live music to town, so like, that's something that I personally took the initiative to like do the legwork, work for. So I just want to encourage any committee members, if there's like event, like, I know you worked on Festival of Nations last year. Like, don't, don't wait for someone to come to you and, and say, what do you want to do, like, just pick what you're interested in, take the initiative to like get the ball rolling and the other committee members will support you. Um, and I would just say that it, it sounds to me like the, the museum's not interested in redoing their contract either way. I mean, so when we put words in your mouth that come to end of the extension, it, it's the impression I get is the museum's not interested in um, picking that up again. Um, I agree with what some others have said about just, I have concerns about farming it out to like Visit Hood River or those type of entities, because I feel like a lot of people in Cascade Locks, we kind of feel like the redheaded stepchild, you know, and I, I just am not confident that we, like, how do we know we would get the same attention and the, the dedicated, um, you know, funneling of tourists here, I just, I feel like that's like the gorge as a whole is a tourism site, but like. but like, how do we make Cascade Locks special? And I feel like that we kind of need to be carved out from other larger DMOs to get that, like, kind of special attention that we should have, so. Yeah, I don't know, but they're kind of my two main thoughts.
Thank you. Heidi?
I'm very new, this is only my third meeting. And the first one that I went to, they wanted us to vote on something that I didn't know anything about. Like, didn't have a packet or didn't have anything. So, I mean, I just feel like it's a bit disorganized and, I mean, like I said, I'm very new, that's all I really, really have for right now.
Thank you for being on tourism, all of you guys, us, Sally. I kind of feel like Heidi, even though I was on it previously years ago, coming on board this, there's, there is no structure in my eyes at this time. But this is a good core group that wants structure, and I think that's why we came here this evening, is because we are looking for a structure, advice, and some direction from the council to what you would like to see us be, your expectations of us. Because I don't think there really is a whole lot of expectation. I mean, we know what we're, kind of know what we're supposed to be doing, but I feel, personally, I feel like we're kind of out there in the wind. And we need somebody to pull us in, help us get our feet on the ground, and get moving forward in a direction that the city, the council, and the committee are solid with and we can feel proud of and do together and work as a team and not feel that, you know, that this work is a team. Because that's, that's how, that's how I saw the tourism committee working the last time I was on it. And they were a team, and they, everybody kind of knew what was going on. And I mean, okay, there were some little ladies, and they were retired, and they had time to do things. But some of us are retired, and that's why we volunteer, and it's our time to step in and kind of pick up, pick up, you know? And hopefully then pass on to the youngsters as they age in. But that structure seems to have disappeared somewhere, didn't get paid forward. And so we need to figure it out again.
I'll call him next, Nathan?
I mean, I would just echo the statements that have been made so far, and that, yeah, I think we do want to be more focused. And I think you have a good group of people that really care about the work. I came on board because I've got a background in marketing and wanted to apply that to projects. And I think the one thing that I will add, or at least reiterate, is that, you know, I think a DMO into the river could probably do some really solid marketing work for us, but I do think it's important to have local voice, because we that live here know what those specific issues are, or how we want to represent ourselves in ways that folks that don't live here aren't going to know. And so regardless of what, you know, board structure we're taking, or, you know, how we want to carve out the mission of this group, I do think it is very important that our voice remain centered on the work. What are your thoughts?
Courtney?
So I'm, with the fluff that, you know, recent tourism committees have gone through, I would say that a benefit of a paid person, whether it's contractor, employee, or however we go with that, the benefit of that would be some continuity from committee member, you know, from committee to committee, in a sense. But to me, support staff is supporting tourism committee to be an independent committee. You know, not independent of council, one of the city, obviously, but to be able to stand on their own two feet and function and encourage that depend, you know, not to encourage dependency on, on the staff, on the hired professional. You know, stuff like website management and updates, that's something that you would want some level of professionalism and, you know, and hitting certain key points like that. I could absolutely understand paying somebody to do those things, but stuff like minutes taking, tourism correspondence, social media posts. Sounds like we've got an advertisement design in-house or communication with designer right here. You know, we've got people that can play roles. And it sounds like people are being used to their, to their potential, to their desires. And it sounds like, you know, I wish I had more of a direction for people to go in, but to me, that would be the role of support staff, would be supporting that.
Totally. Yes, supporting the vision of what tourism wants to do, not telling tourism what they need to do. I need to see ordinance two fifty-nine, so that, and we should have been provided, I feel like we should have been provided that before this meeting. I also need to understand what tourism now is, because when I was on council before, it was heads and beds. But now, it sounds to me like there's been a whole bunch of other things that have been added that tourism dollars can be used for. So I would like a clearer definition of what tourism dollars can be used for. And I also need to understand how this is a forty-hour job. I mean, forty-hour week, a forty-hour, yeah, forty-hour a week job, because I, you know, we're a small community. And I would, you know, I would also like to have some feedback from the hotel people that provide this tourism to see if this is something that they feel that would benefit them, I mean, because they're the most painted. So, I, you know, those are some things that I would like to have answers to. But, so we've got about, about four minutes left of this work session, do you have anything to do? You want to add?
Just got so many questions. Yeah, so one of the things I heard, and I appreciate everybody kind of sharing your viewpoints, that was really helpful for me. Who's the committee chair? And then who prepared the agenda for your meetings before the?
Then I review it.
And you review it, and then, so just, and I heard several people mention that they didn't see the packet before the meeting. How is that supposed to get distributed to?
The packets get emailed out the Thursday before the meeting. And then we print the copies of them as soon as we email them. And if you want it in person, or like a paper copy beforehand, you can come get it from us, or you can print it yourself, those are the.
Is it kind of like how council runs then? So like, if we want to get it put on the agenda, then we take it to the mayor, and then mayor and the city administrator work together to?
Yep.
Sort of similar. And then Heather would have poured the agenda?
Or add topics, or people have done topics.
Sorry, I don't mean to be boring, but I'm like trying to understand the procedural side of it.
It sounds like people are ordering the process.
Yeah, having some structure. So, and when do you meet? What day of the week do you meet at?
Mondays.
Mondays?
Yeah, first Monday of the month, typically with us.
Sometimes. Sometimes. So there's been challenges with meeting forums, is that right?
Yeah, it's all about the government.
And I think, I think in a small community like this that is volunteer-based, you're going to have people with state of conflicts, I do think the group works pretty well to find time each month. It would be nice to be able to lock it down and say, if you're going to volunteer, which is the day? But I understand, I can be a little sick too.
I also heard that there is challenges getting vendors paid, because the, you need to have those bills approved by the committee, is that correct? If I understand that right? And so when then you all can't meet, then those bills can't get approved, so then those vendors aren't getting paid. Is there a recommendation on how this can land that?
When that happens, if the committee can't make forum, we go to the city administrator for approval?
Is that working okay then?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks, some other questions?
Right. So what I really heard is communication too. So I think, I don't, this is just the beginning of figuring out how to go about this. But I think tourism as a committee, at least you guys have somewhere to start talking on what direction we build, it should go. And then as council, we probably need to have another work session at some point and decide and look at these ordinances and stuff and see what it is, because I know it's very, it says, it talks, there's so many different places to look at what we're supposed to be doing. So, and I know it talks about how long the packet's supposed to be out before the meeting. Also that the chair takes the minutes, and then you have a secretary for your.
There is a secretary supposed to be.
There, yeah, because there's supposed to be a secretary and all of that. And you guys would be able to see that if you got the procedures and the proper documentation, so you know. It's kind of hard to know what to do if you don't ever get the directions. Kind of like baking a cake, like if you don't have the directions, you're probably not going to get a good cake. So.
So what the direction is, what are, we need to, I think we need to give direction, I think we need to help coordinate, either it's either staff or the committee. What do you need? Well, I think you need to get the proper notification, what Brenda's been talking about to the committee, so that they understand what is, what we have in our law books that are the way it's supposed to go. And then from there on, what's the direction? Are we going to let tourism hash this out and bring it back to us? What, where?
I think they should, well, we should get our procedures and all of that, so like have all the directions and whatever the ordinance two five nine and all of that, get them all the information, and you guys decide what you want to do and bring it back to council. But I think communication, and we don't just have to have, it does say that we have one meeting a year, but we can have more than that. It's all about communication. And we have awesome people that are volunteering for our communities, and why not use their time rather than wasting it, you know? Because there's so much that we could be doing for our community, you know?
That's the question, we're running out of time. And so just, I'm unsure, is this a question, can tourism, if they deem it necessary, are they able to meet more than once a month? Yes.
Yes.
So, I mean, that's something, maybe when you guys get, you know, all this information, all this structure as far as what the meeting's supposed to look like, and maybe what the job descriptions, all of your job descriptions is. You know, if people find time, like you said, it's always really hard.
Next week will be three weeks in a row for us.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
Mayor, can I add one thing?
Yeah, we're late, so I got three of you that want to say one thing.
I just want to say also that how are we going to move forward with the extension of the six months for?
I thought we had already decided that at council.
Okay.
Last meeting.
But, but we've got somebody recommending to not go up for an RFP, so why?
Well, we're asking the tourism to go back and make that decision. We're going to get them the information.
Just an extension over six months.
Yeah, okay. Okay, Bernard, real quick.
Yeah, so some middle ground that I could think may make sense. In lieu of hiring an additional FTE or a new FTE, maybe we take this existing contract and we grow it a little, we add some funds to it, so it's a more robust contract that provides a little more service. So tourism committee, you know, the staffing that we do hire for has the resources available or necessary to keep, put these packets together in a more timely manner and get them out and do some of this work that maybe is not as to the standard we'd like to see. So if we increase the contract, that maybe that's an option to improve some of the issues that we're wrestling with.
All right. And thank you guys for all showing up and being here and talking to us.
Sorry, I was late.
Yeah.
Okay, five-minute recess to reset the first one. We're going to talk for five minutes, Bernard?